There you go. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. The location of the fire exit doorway is on either end of the hallway, case emergency. The AED machine is hanging on the wall directly across from that door. Please silence all cell phones and papers. Court please take the roll call.
Carol Roth.
Here.
Rocky Elsberg.
Here.
Tom Vaz.
Here.
Eddie Hay.
Here.
John Boebert.
Here.
Give you a couple of minutes for the minutes of the May nineteenth meeting, two thousand twenty-five. Motion number one. Second. Motion made by Carol Roth, second by Eddie Hay to approve the minutes of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Court please vote a vote.
Carol Roth.
Aye.
Rocky Elsberg.
Aye.
Tom Vaz.
Aye.
Eddie Hay.
Aye.
John Boebert.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move down to our public hearing. Please show approval for public attention. Thank you, Sarah. Jeffrey Blair. Okay, we'll move down to Steve Rutherford.
Yes, sir.
If you are dealing with ducks?
Yes, sir.
I see your granddaughter with you.
Yes.
Thank you.
My mini me.
Okay, how many ducks would you like to have?
Just six.
Just six ducks?
Just six. We can't handle any more now.
Have you got the facilities ready for them?
Yes, we do.
Coffee pot is standing correct.
Yes, it is.
The duck will end up in a pit.
Well, if they can get over the electric fences, then they can have it. We have everything electrified. We got a two outdoor enclosures, one that's permanent. And then we have a fenced in area where we can move the fence around the lawn. That's electric. So they can go out and get their swim pool and have fun and come back in. Nice thing.
Do you have a way to get rid of the waste, you know?
We compost everything with our garden. Eight acre field in the back, or in back of us, so in the back there, we compost everything. And then after a year, we can't put it directly on the garden from the poop because it's too hot and it'll burn everything. We use a combination of chasings and straw. We got a good mixture and lawn clippings and
Is there any further questions from any court members? At this point time, hope we not break public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal, please give your name and address. I'm seeing anybody, hear anybody, I declare this public hearing closed. Any further questions before I read the Number one, what an undescribable change will be produced in the care of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties both created by the granting of the area variance? Okay. Number two, what benefits offered by applicant can be achieved by some people not that other than an area variance?
Not the same slide.
Number three, whether requested area variance is substantial. Really, number six, uh? Number four, what a proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district? He's got a lot more ducks flying in the road.
Yeah, any given time, we got a couple thousand bees out in the backyard.
Correct, I know. Been there many times. Number five, what the elect difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant due to decision of the Tony Bartlett field, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance?
He wants the doctor said it's self-created.
Yeah. Okay. If no further questions?
The Cheryl, when, back when we were doing the chickens, we were putting time limits on it. And then it went to, you just give them the okay. Is there time limits now when you give the okay?
It's four or five years. For chickens?
Yeah.
It's four or five years growing.
Because I didn't know if we should put a similar time limit on the ducks to the chickens. Now, our attorney, she could have had less.
Yes, you could. Yes, you can put a limit on that.
It, like, all the chicken, I don't know if correct word would be permits. They timeout. And so I, I was thinking that'd be a good idea to do with this one too, you know?
What's the life expectancy of a duck?
Pardon?
What is the life expectancy of a duck?
And how many ducks are around?
Yeah, right.
He's got a marriage for six ducks, so there he can, they can take that as its ducks, but sometimes.
We did a protection. We did a protection. So I'm not, with that spray, so there's not pertaining to, once we change that. We did not, we only get a, a bone change for chickens.
Chickens, correct.
And not, we're not, this is not pertaining.
Right, but they can put a time limit on the variance. And the reason for that is so that if something happens in the next two years, you don't keep up. The ducks are crazy and smells, things like that. They can take the variance back in, yeah.
Go ahead.
If still want ducks after the four or five years, whichever day you sign, then you can reapply.
Okay.
No, I do have one question, though.
Like that?
Are guinea hens considered a chicken or a completely different poll?
Hens are chickens. No, no roosters allow, no hen's considered chickens.
It's again, it's poultry.
It's poultry.
Well, that's what I thought with the ducks, too. Right, Rocky.
I would say we're talking in a pretty gray area, basically. Ducks and chickens, they're, they're all live.
Yeah, no child policy on the ducks.
Guinea hens are great.
In my opinion, I would handle all of them.
I tie a lot, tie a lot of flies during the winter. And guinea hen is one of the primary cultures that I use. Or there was a lady that had chickens and two guinea hens to give away this last week and they're going to pick it up and the wife says, "You better not, because this is what the law says."
Well, I like her.
This is only talking about ducks, you know?
Yeah, they're only talking about ducks.
Okay.
It does not, maybe everything is to a hen, guinea hen.
Okay. I'll make a motion to grant Steve Rutherford, three oh five Lake Road, East Port. How do I want to order it? Variance to have six ducks on his property for up to five years. At the public hearing, there was no negative comments. We went over the five criteria. This is the minimum variance to grant release, relief, and it's a type-two secret.
Motion made by Rocky Elsberg, second by Carol Roth, approve the application of an area variance variance received. Rutherford, three oh five Lake Road, East Port. For having six ducks, five years. Court please vote a vote.
Carol Roth.
Right.
Rocky Elsberg.
Aye.
Tom Vaz.
Aye.
Eddie Hay.
Aye.
John Boebert.
All right.
Okay, good luck with your.
Thank you very much.
Have a great day. You too. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
She was so scared. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we'll move down to Cody White. Self-keeper. It's very well.
Nobody likes us.
How about Joe Montanti?
Here.
Okay. Do you like to tell the board what you would like to do?
Well, I'd like to put an additional garden shed in my backyard, behind the pool area. I'd like to put in a twelve by twenty square shed and also a garden. My wife kind of used to do a lot of gardening. Take out, you know, there's a sixteen foot wall requirement. I'm asking for a twelve by twenty, which you put into square footage. But if you have a different idea, I'm open to suggestions.
I personally I don't have any.
Haven't we, in the past, just as long as it stays within that two hundred fifty-six square feet, correct?
That's, that's what I.
I think that was, you know, the, the size, as long as it was within that two hundred fifty-six square feet.
Yes.
I'm thinking that's, because some, you know, like I say, you want a little bit longer, narrower shed versus whatever.
It shouldn't be two sixty-eight, what was yours going to be?
A twelve by twenty, it'd be two hundred and forty square feet.
Yes, so he.
So he's within the square footage.
Right, it's just that.
Yeah. It's just a twelve by twenty instead of.
It says on here, the longest wall should be sixteen feet.
Maybe already has shed on the front.
If we were.
Yeah.
Any further questions from any court members? This would be just for scheduling a public hearing, so we can no reason we can't schedule a public hearing.
Code says.
What is that?
Does the code say maximum sixteen foot?
Oh, yes, I think it's underneath sheds.
He gets sheds.
Okay, and he wants a twelve by twenty, so it's a twenty foot, that's, okay, yeah, add that to the, yeah.
Just, if we're going to do a variance, get everything in, so that you come once, you don't, you don't. You know, if it's two fifty-six, it's two fifty-six, but if it says sixteen foot wall and you want a twenty, it's just a variance to have a second shed in, in the third length of the wall.
Right, I just want to make sure, I'm fully aware of what plan, is there no set plan right at the moment? We actually just come up with this idea a few days before the meeting was scheduled.
Any further questions?
I made a motion to schedule a public hearing for July.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, after seven P M. For Connie and Joe Montanti, am I correct?
Correct.
For variance from town code five twenty dash thirty-one A, to have more than one accessory structure on the block in the rear yard. And I don't have the code number, but if you could get that for us, Cheryl, to have the maximum wall length. To be, yeah. Maximum wall length is twenty feet, so you'd want a four-foot variance from the maximum wall, but it will be within the two hundred and sixty square foot. A lot of size. And we, Monday the twenty-first, after seven P M.
Second. Motion made by Eddie Hay, second by Rocky Elsberg, to schedule a public hearing for Connie and Joe Montanti for Monday, July twenty-first, after seven o'clock. For variance, this needs to be, court please vote a vote.
Carol Roth.
Right.
Rocky Elsberg.
Aye.
Tom Vaz.
Aye.
Eddie Hay.
Aye.
John Boebert.
Aye.
Okay. If you're seventy-five dollars in prior to July first.
On July nineteenth, sometime after ten thirty, we come out and do the properties, so we know what we're talking about and neighbors and everything. So could you just like paint or stakes or something, so we can see what you're planning on?
Yeah, I can put a, I can provide your picture.
I think you've got the paint already.
But anyhow, we, we always go out and do the property at.
That's fine. Yeah, I had to put a first stake out to.
Okay.
Picture for us.
Okay.
It kind of grew black line, but it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, now we go to Lori Rickenberg. Tell the board what you'd like to do.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Shalansky and on behalf of Lori Rickenberg, I'm in the building.
Okay.
She right now has a small garage, I believe it's twelve by twenty. It was a boathouse, that was converted into a garage. And we're looking to expand it a little bit, pull it away from the lake and towards the road, take up more. Just storage, just a little bit bigger garage for her, so she can put her car.
So are you removing that and replacing?
Yes, yeah.
Completely.
Correct.
Random.
Yes.
Okay.
Joey C, it says demo the septic system, has she got, what's going on?
So, so I guess probably was there last week, crushed the septic tank and built it in.
Oh, because she hooked up to the stores?
She not connected to the sewer, yeah, they connected her. You know, I believe the leach lines are still in there, so that would be maybe the only thing I'd have to pull out.
Any further questions?
Well, I can, I can make a few comments.
Sure.
Okay. Also, he, we had a concern, my neighbor, about their view. I do have a photo in there of the view from the neighbor's area where his house is over there. He was very concerned, but he thought his house just had a better view, but then he did have a conversation with his husband. And he agreed they had a little view instead of a no view. So.
So, but you're going to pull this garage closer to the road, correct?
Yeah.
So, so he's actually going to have a better view, view from the front, right? From the lakeside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess you're really not blocking their view. You're making it better. Improving it, yeah, okay, right.
So that is the one, so we're gonna, I'm going to sort a magazine, but I will contact Kevin probably tomorrow to get some more information on septic system.
Okay.
We're seeing together today. What is the dimensions of the new garage? Twenty-four by?
Thirty-six.
Okay. And what is going to be the side set, the side setback should be no less than six feet. Do you know how far in the side setback?
Uh, we can make some adjustments. I was planning on being probably right where they're at now, I believe it's like eight plus six.
The back, or the, the front, because the lakeside is the front side.
Right, right.
Is in the half and the back is nine point one. So if, if you kept it on that.
Yeah.
If you keep the, the east wall right there. Much wider, as long as the east wall doesn't move further away, closer to the property.
Then you would not need the side setback variance, but does, well, it does actually turn the passing to corner, but they wouldn't have to do the lake, but. And there is a statement of purpose, five twenty dash twenty-one A, I think you guys have a copy of that in the code. It states that you cannot block any views from the, from the lake to like the parkway. You cannot block views from like the parkway to the lake. So, but I think we covered that with the resident saying that he was not concerned about these views. So I had to put all this in here, may, just to make sure we covered all the bases, so just want to make sure.
I can see it would be pretty difficult to control from the parkway to your property.
I know. Okay, but also.
Yeah, that's a brand new to me, these guys.
Yeah, it's been in there forever, but it's.
But I think, yeah, but I think it's for the ones that have property on the other side of the road. The parkway, property, road, property.
Right.
Then, yeah, I think it's that, that's why it's in there.
So you'll just be attaching that where that looks like there's a, the concrete bolt ramp, you'll be just extending that to the new?
Uh, no, I don't believe so, I don't, I don't think.
Because if you're moving it closer to the road, correct?
Right.
That's what you're saying?
Yeah.
So it'd be a gap in, if this garage now goes right to the concrete.
Right, right, yeah, as far as right now, we don't plan on doing anything with that area.
How far you moving towards the road?
I guess that depends on how far away I have to be from the road. I think she wants to pull it as far towards the road as possible.
I think it's thirty-five feet. I think thirty-five, and the other side also has to be thirty-five feet from the beginning of the rocks and the water side. So you have to have thirty-five feet from the back of the structure to where the rocks begin.
And there were no, do you see concerns?
No, the only concern was for, on paper you have that, I, I was going to say about it today, if there was a pipe that goes up to the lake for sewage, which some people on the lake do have a permit, that is allowable, but he says that there is not, correct?
It's now, yeah, now it's.
Now it's got sewage.
Okay, okay.
So we get all these questions, but we can include that just to get all the answers.
But so.
How big is the new garage? Twenty-four by thirty-six, pretty good.
Do you have a height?
Fifteen feet, and we had to drop the six twelve dash five twelve for cheap.
The only thing I would question, Cheryl, was impervious, because if, when you look at that map, there's a lot of concrete on the lakeside.
There is one.
So are we going to be, by adding, you're adding a bigger footprint for the new garage, so what, we'll have to figure out what the impervious is now, because I can't believe with that, without, with that concrete and existing house and garage, it's gotta be there's a lot of impervious.
Yeah, I apologize.
So I, I just am looking at this and I'm seeing concrete.
But I can do that tomorrow.
I mean, that's been there for a long time, the concrete, so.
It has been, and then I can measure the rear surface.
You might need a variance for that.
Yes. I think Doug Hill lived there before this, when he purchased the new apartment. I think he had the, seen that their variance was a little.
What's the size of the existing?
Twelve and a half by twenty and a half.
Okay.
Are you guys up there on this map?
Yeah.
That I have the dimensions, yeah, so it's only, it's forty-eight feet. Usually we don't, like if there's rocks, we don't make the, to the rocks inland, we don't bother up to the rocks to measure. So I did measure from the rear of the existing shed to the water. And I don't know if it was appropriate, I would just, it still is considered erosion protection.
There's going to be a difference in lake side.
Right.
Shouldn't need a variance lakeside, you'll need a variance streetside if you're moving forward, correct?
But I, but I do have, yes, I do have a feeling that where I have this forty-eight point three five feet, it's only half of that. Because I went all the way to get under the concrete and usually if it was rocks, we would, we would go to here, because the rocks are here and not over there on the other. Just on that, you know. Of front of the park.
Yeah.
And there's a pulp box, like right behind it, was a pulp box, I think.
Oh, yeah.
I would just do a variance for both sides, you know.
The back.
Front and back, just to be, just to be.
Okay. So we have everything clear. Okay.
We can do the variance, we get all the numbers the first time, we don't have to, if you get in the middle, maybe it's a go or something.
Yeah, you don't want to.
Yeah, I'd rather have everything covered up front.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't need no sky.
And then at that time, in the second public hearing, you will also do the C top net at the same time.
Get the same thing.
And I think I will, because if we wait a long time to get all of this together and correct, I think I'm going to send them to planning board in two weeks. So we can get the consultation, if there's any work done within a hundred feet of the lake, if they're taken care of, and then, you know, a week and a half later, we have.
Yeah, that's, just because you get some format, you can't go ahead and help the variances and doesn't need site plan to be, right? All right, yeah, I would do that.
That's very, yeah, okay. I think that's July. So, thank you. And then the other, from the last meeting, this week, this quarter, it'll be July nineteenth.
Please, proper view.
Well, no, because I just, I wrote down for somebody except the nineteenth.
That's, that's a Saturday.
Oh, that's.
Then we'll view it on the nineteenth.
So twenty-first, so.
The twenty-first is.
The area be twenty-first.
After Saturday.
Thank you.
But, yeah, I figured we'll view it on the nineteenth after ten thirty.
So we got all the figures in there? Okay.
Make the motion to schedule a public hearing for Lori Rickenberg of five eight two four West Apple Beach Road for variances to remove the existing garage and put a new one up. A new garage that will be twenty-four by thirty-six. It will need a variance for potential variances for front setback, rear setback, impervious surface. July twenty-first after seven P M.
Motion made by Eddie Hay, second by Carol Roth, to scheduling a public hearing for Loretta Rickenberg, fifty-eight twenty-four West Apple Beach Road for Monday. 5824 West Luton Beach Road for Monday, July 21st after 7:00. For variance to be fixed for structural new drives. Would please vote a vote.
Kate Carol La.
Aye.
Rocky Elsberg.
Aye.
Tom Vaz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
John Bogan.
Aye.
Okay, and your application be prior to July 1st, okay? Anything else? I think you're all set to go.
Thank you for your time.
Hang in there, it'll get better.
Thank you.
Joel, we'll be in touch.
Sounds good, thanks, Joel.
Yeah, have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Well, apparently. They'll just have to wait for the next month, I guess.
Yeah, maybe you can call them.
Did, um, did we adjourn these, did you make a motion to adjourn? Yeah, so that people.
Yeah, because I thought maybe they might show up. They did, so.
Call and see what happens.
So we will make a motion to.
Adjourn.
Adjourn it till next month for the two, Jeffrey Blair and Cody Weiss.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for Jeffrey Blair, 7866 New Hope Drive till next month, July 28th.
Second, motion made by Carl Ross, second by Rocky Elsberg to. Hold phone until next month for Jeffrey Blair, 7866 New Hope Drive. Would please vote a vote.
Carol La.
Aye.
Rocky Elsberg.
Aye.
Tom Vaz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
And Bogan.
Aye.
Make, make a motion to, to adjourn the public hearing for the area variance for Cody Weiss until next month. For Cody Weiss and 3987 Brick School.
Second, motion made by Eddie Hay, second by Jeffrey Bogan to hold phone Cody Weiss application for area variance for next month, would please vote a vote.
Carol La. Rocky Elsberg.
Aye.
Tom Vaz.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
John Bogan.
Aye.
Would we have it, have it in the schedule?
Yeah. Better.
So.
They didn't make that.
Well, you could.
But once he comes in, we'll schedule that for the next two weeks.
Well, you could, you could do, well, you could do the publication now, we're running agenda for a public hearing.
Oh, I am, yes.
Or we can do that.
I mean, the ones that were on for agenda, they came in too late.
Okay.
The rest.
Still have to get the product, you can run the information.
Another code too, to make this only private drive, drives are carports.
Yes, yes, are we gonna have the only new charter scheme, do you want?
Probably not.
That, I, I totally agree with that.
Oh, it's Sprinter?
Sprinter.
Sprinter, oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Some of them have been.
Well, it's gonna show up next week.
Yes, yes, they have changed, but I had spoken to someone, I, me, and they had said, um, oh, no, we don't, we don't need to change the code. We just added that, or, no, we can't just add.
No, we got, we got, we got, you know.
So that's why we could still, I'm going.
I got a couple other things I wanna change, so I'll put them all together.
Awesome.
Or not, you wanna work on it?
No.
I know I had it.
It's Sprinter.
Okay.
It's Sprinter.
I appreciate it. Okay, just gotcha. Anything from the legal department?
Nope.
Summer, what's that?
That's all right.
I have nothing, Cheryl.
My building won't, I, I just had a, a virus. And they want to.
Keep the neighbors happy, right? Okay, how about our lovely town board members?
Smooth, you know, we're, I'm trying to think, we decided on that, the EDUs for the sewer district, or is that not?
Oh, we're having a public hearing on July, um, I don't know. I don't remember, but I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, we're probably getting scheduled for the EDUs on the sewer district, and also the new water, because we're setting up something to show.
Oh, yeah.
Information light.
An information light, so that, uh, we can find out if people are even interested.
Yeah.
Because if there's not a whole lot of people interested in it, it'll never fly through the comptroller's office.
Yeah, we're worried about that.
Yeah.
That's about it, we'll be working.
Joel's grandfather again, congratulations.
Wow, Joel, that's awesome.
I might just, you know, they.
I will make one comment on the way the sewers handling coming up westport, it would have been just nice to inform people who live there what is going on, people running around your house putting in flags, like, we didn't know what's going on. Never been notified for nothing. It's just a little bit irritating, that's nice.
Is that the candle?
Probably the candle.
It's the candle, it's, uh, Orleans County, yeah.
I got enough flags, I won't go all my long for a month, it's flags all over.
Okay, I'll take another bit. See if I can.
Well, your nephew will prove it.
No, I mean, it's just, you would think today's world, you would think they'd show a little courtesy.
No, they showed, but that's, you know.
That, that's, that's the old school way of doing things, so nobody respects anybody.
Yeah, but you know me, I'm very old school.
So am I, my friend, so am I.
All right, just a comment.
Thank you, we apologize about that.
Probably should send a note.
No, it's not, it's not your fault.
Orleans County, let them know that, you know, you do have to be a little respectful of our.
You're right.
Our residents.
I'll send it to your nephew tomorrow.
Well, I save a lot, I, don't worry. Anything, Jim, you got anything?
No, just bad night for the Yankees.
What do you mean? Every night's a bad night for the Yankees. Oh, conservation board member, you got anything?
He just has books tonight.
Well, she didn't take notes the whole time, I didn't.
Well, obviously, this comment, that's really helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Remember that. Well, I guess that kind of sells everything.
You can see it through the video.
It's better to see it live, we look around every time.
Wow, I don't want that. These videos, time or two, in front of our. I'm doing that right now, fine, any further business? I'm moving with your.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everybody, get out.
And I'm gonna be grandma then, dude.
Wow, for you, right?
Yeah. That's news ever. I'm so excited. That'll be my first grandbaby. Finally getting one.
That's, that is.
Oh, absolutely.
That is the best news ever.